I booked out February the 18th, Lee County Board Supervisor. Thank you for the order. First for the business public hearing. Lee County Board Supervisor will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February the 18th, 2025, 6:00 PM in the General District Courtroom, Lee County Courthouse located in Johnmore, Virginia to solicit input on a special use permit request. Tom Flora has applied for special use permit to allow recreational vehicle park in an A1 agricultural district. The property is located in the Jungle Community on the east of Collins Road and consists of plus or minus 6.9 acres and is located adjacent to 290 Spire Glass Drive, tax parcel number 53-A-21A.
Mr. Chairman, I was unable to attend last month's planning meeting. I was out of town for training with FEMA and DCR. According to Ms. Wilder's notes and recordings of the meeting, there was just a brief discussion of the planning commission. This was a property that we had done a rezoning on the previous cycle of meetings between planning and board. They are applying for the special use to bring their property into compliance. They have had multiple REs already on the property, but this is just the second step. We've already approved the rezoning now, this is the finalizing to bring it into compliance. The planning did vote unanimously to recommend approval.
Thank you. Anyone here to speak on that? Yes, sir.
I'm the consultant for them. They were unable to attend, but I concur with everything that Clint said to say.
Anyone else?
Make motion to agree.
Second. Motion to second, Allen Fair.
Aye.
Poo. Lee County Board Supervisor will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, February the 18th, 2025, 6:00 PM in the General District Courtroom, Lee County Courthouse located in Johnmore, Virginia to solicit input on the proration of personal property taxes. The term proration refers to the authority of locality to collect personal property taxes on a prorating basis. Under the current system, personal property, i.e. vehicles, boats, trailers, et cetera, is taxed based on the citizen in the county on January the 1st tax day of the current year. Proposed proration of taxes would change this policy to levy taxes on personal property prorated on a monthly basis, which it acquired a citizen with Lee County after the tax date. This proposed change would also provide for relief from tax and a refund of the appropriate amount of tax already paid, which shall be prorated on a monthly basis for a personal property loses its citizen within locality after tax date or after the day which it acquires a citizen. Anyone here to speak on that?
Really just wanted to come and make myself available if anyone had any questions or concerns that may since the last meeting that anyone had thought about. I did have a couple of, I guess, examples, a couple of citizens that approached me and gave me permission to use this information just for your consideration. And then I also wanted to discuss how proration would negatively affect personal property tax relief, which would increase the tax liability on other citizens, on all citizens essentially. But the first example that we have, we had a citizen who bought a 2019 Jeep on April the 8th, 2022 for $37,125. At that time when they registered the Jeep, they paid $1,540.69 in sales tax. We then picked the Jeep up under our current assessment process. January 1 of '23, we billed the tax bill on that Jeep $466.45. 2024, it was $402.68. On July the 27th of '24, they traded this Jeep in for a 2022 Jeep with a sales price of $35,595. And at that time, they paid a sales tax of $1,477.19. So the total tax paid on this vehicle or by this taxpayer on these two vehicles to that point was $3,887.1. With $3,017.88, that being sales tax, and $869.13 being personal property tax. If we were prorating under the same circumstances, the Jeep was purchased April the 8th, 2022 for $37,125, they again paid the $1,540.69 in sales tax when they registered the Jeep. However, they would then be issued a prorated personal property bill on the Jeep for 2022 that would have been in the amount of $474.58. The following year, they would have had the 2023 personal property taxes, which is $466.45. And then when they traded in 2024 for the 2022 Jeep with a sales price of $35,595, they would have again paid the sales tax on that, $1,477.19, but then they would also be subject to proration on the 2019 Jeep that they traded in, which had been $234.90. Also, they would have been prorated on the 2022 Jeep that they bought, $266.91. So the total tax that they would have paid if they had been prorating in this scenario was $4,460.72. The exact same amount of sales tax, $3,017.88, but the personal property tax would have been $1,442.84. So over this course of three years and two transactions, they would have paid an additional $573.71 in personal property tax. So that's just an example of, you know, it's a real life situation where someone trades a vehicle, how this would increase the tax liability on people. And the thing to remember, and I know I can understand the fairness standpoint of you pay on it from the time you had it, but typically when you buy a vehicle, it's going to be worth more money than when you sell or trade the vehicle. So if you're not, you know, taxed at that point because you're paying a sales tax already, a lot of people get sales tax and property tax confused. Those are two totally different things. So you're already paying the sales tax, but then you would be assessed on the higher amount. And I know, I said, "Well, you know, I sold it in, you know, March or whatever. I don't want to pay the whole year." You have to think you got the year on the front end when the vehicle was worth more. You actually got that. So if you think about it, it's still cheaper most of the time on the citizen to pay the tax on the back end. Another situation is title issues. And so this was a real life issue that just want to point out some of the challenges we have geographically when implementing this, just due to our proximity to Tennessee and Kentucky. Anyway, I won't go through everything again on this, but essentially the total tax on this vehicle, the way we've done it on the two vehicles, was $6,702.68 over the course of 2018 through 2024. And it was $2,711.70 sales tax, $3,999.98 of personal property tax. If we were prorating, it would have been an increase of $313.35 in personal property tax. But that's not the issue with this one specifically I wanted to mention. The issue is this vehicle, they had a 2015 Chevrolet, and they traded in Millsboro, Kentucky for a 2020 Ram on November 25th, 2020. Okay? When they traded, of course, with our tax bills being due October 31st, that was after the due date. So then we would have to issue refunds and supplements at prorating. But the bigger issue was when this occurred, and this occurs more frequently than we would like dealing with out of state dealerships, the vehicle didn't come through to us in DMV until March the 4th of 2021, when it was re-titled in Tennessee. So evidently, somebody out of Tennessee went to Millsboro, bought the vehicle, titled it. The dealership, I guess, was holding the title until that time. We showed the title and the tag both being live January 1 of 2021. So we, you know, we assessed that vehicle. This generated two bills because we showed the new vehicle they got in November, and the old one, the information didn't come through to us until four months later.
So because last somebody didn't go and turn them old tags in?
Yes. Yeah, they evidently didn't turn the tag in. They were just going to let it expire, but the registration changed. A lot of times people will transfer tags as well, but in this situation, it was a different tag. But I guess in saying that, with an effective date of January 1, we have a lot of issues with this when people trade in the latter part of the year. And where we're at, a lot of people trade Kingsport, Johnson City, Millsboro, Knoxville, Corbin, I mean, they just trade out of state because of where we're located. It takes a lot of times for those out of state agencies to circle that information back around the DMV. Of course, when that happens, people come, "You know, you're taxing me for both vehicles." You know, and I understand the frustration, but when we do that download, you know, we have thousands of accounts. We just do, you know, the download the data. We don't know the individual circumstances. So I guess my thought on that is if you have essentially a moving target all the time instead of January 1, I think there would be a tremendous amount of abatements and supplements when you may end up erroneously double taxing these people for two and three months overlap that you're not meaning to, just in the way that the information is downloaded. So that's just something else to consider. And the last thing I wanted to bring to your attention was in regards to PPTR calculations. And I don't know if I adequately explained that at the last meeting, but since 2004, the amount of money that the county has received for personal property tax relief has been That pot of money has not changed in 20 years. I mean, it's frozen at that amount. So the PPTR is expressed as a percentage against qualifying vehicles. And in order to qualify, vehicles must be non-business vehicles with a gross vehicle weight of 10,000 pounds or less. I guess the best way to explain this, and I had a scenario here, but as far as a sort of a plain simplified way to explain it is when I was a teenager, I remember getting a jumbo cheeseburger, water fries I found and drank for $2.99, taxing all those $3.14. I got it to the patio. Remember it well because I dug the change out of my console a lot of times when my truck was paid for it. But anyway, let's hypothetically say that at that time, the state awarded the county $3 for every meal and just say food cost relief that they afford compared to the items. And the beginning of the relief would have covered the majority of your food costs. And if you wanted a rip off, you wanted more expensive meal, you would only get the relief on the first $3, then you had to pay the difference. The PPTR kind of works the same way. As the years went on, the cheeseburger combo went to $4.99, $5.99, $6.99, $7.99, but the amount of relief is still set at $3. So when you used to be at 97% relief, now that relief is expressed at 38%. Last year, our PPTR was 30.95% was the effective ratio on that. So this is a very simplistic explanation of how inflation dilutes the amount of PPTR and how that goes down. But by increasing the assessment amounts throughout the year, if you're bringing in higher priced vehicles, because on the data that I provided last month, 81 out of 100 transactions, it showed people traded up when they traded vehicles. So that increase in value, it soaks up more of that personal property tax relief, if that makes sense. So if you're applying that relief across a higher valued properties, the percentage goes down. And I had done a calculation here. I don't see my paper. But anyway, on that, the calculation essentially on a $20,000 vehicle, the amount of relief that we applied to that was $127.00 and some odd cents was the amount of tax relief they were awarded. If that relief changed 5%, and I pulled data from Page and Rockbridge counties that have the closest amount of population to us that prorate, and their PPTR percentage is 21% and 21 and a half and 27%. So if ours just went down 5%, that would essentially up the tax bill on those $20,000 vehicles would go up to $20 apiece, at least because of the dilution of the PPTR. So I just want to make sure that even with implementing that, even people that don't trade vehicles may see a rise in their tax bill because of the dilution of the PPTR. But I did just want to speak to that and just make sure that, you know, whatever you all decide to do, that you take the whole picture into consideration and also, you know, just to give us the helpful resources to do it with if you decide to go down this path. But I'm here to answer any questions that you all may have.
So on the sales tax of a vehicle, once somebody buys one, the county gets how much of the sales tax? Zero? The whole purpose for our personal property tax is to gain revenue for the county, correct?
Yes, it's a source of revenue.
It's a source. One of the two sources that we have. Am I wrong? Two sources?
Those are the two main sources.
Those are the two main sources. Okay. Is there any tax relief for somebody that sells their vehicle in February?
Yes.
What's the relief?
The PPTR percentage that they would get.
What if they're not eligible for it?
Do you mean they use the vehicle for business use or?
No, like my personal car, if I sell it right now, I still have to pay a whole year's worth of tax on it. No relief for that whatsoever.
When you bought that car, do you remember what month you bought it in?
No. No clue.
Let's just say you bought it in February, that year.
Say I bought it in November.
Okay.
In that year, no matter.
Then that vehicle would have been worth more. How long ago was that?
A year ago.
Okay, so you bought it a year ago, and what model is the vehicle?
It's an older, I don't know if you remember, 2005, something like that.
Okay, so if the vehicle was a 2005 and you bought it in November of '23, am I following you? Okay. That vehicle would have been essentially 18-year-old. It would still have a book value. We would value that by the book. You would have got a supplemental tax bill if prorating, say it was in November that year, for a month or month and a half, you know, however it broke down. Then 2024, you would have been billed, the vehicle was 19-years-old. Once the vehicle reaches 20 years of age, it actually goes out of the book and it's flat valued. We currently do that at $500 because there is no book value for that. So let's say the vehicle was worth $2,500 when you got it. So for 2025, it would be valued $500 if it's 20-year-old vehicle. One before it would have been valued.
But what I'm asking is, I don't own it, I own it two months in that year, but I'm going to have to pay a year's worth of tax on it. Am I wrong? A whole year's worth of tax on it.
But when you purchased it, let's say it was in February, you would have not paid 10 months' worth of taxes when the vehicle was valued more.
Correct, but I bought it in November.
Right.
So I got a month of free, but I gotta pay a whole year for.
But you can look at individual cases all day long, but if you stayed on the average, say June, half the year, typically when you sell or trade it back, it's going to be worth less. So if you had to pay the tax on the front end when it's worth $5,000 and then when you, you don't pay the tax in, but you pay the tax on sort of $500.
Then you don't pay that year. If you buy it in February, you don't owe till January the 1st of the following year.
Correct.
I get that. I get that. And it's like you said, tax plan.
Yeah, it is.
Your word to us, give you the tools that you need to implement this. Okay. Can you define that?
Well, the main thing is manpower. When I did check with VAI, they said that it would be a minimal cost from our software standpoint, it's not the most user-friendly software, but they agreed to work with us. He didn't give me a specific number, but he said it was essentially just our module would do it. It's just a reprogramming thing. So we would have to do that. No one in my office is trained to do that, so we would have to, of course, take training and go through all of that. And reaching out to some more counties, I mentioned Rockbridge and Page as being the two that have the most similar population to us. I did ask them some questions. Page County, they have eight employees in their office, and they dedicate two to proration. Rockbridge County, they have five employees other than the commissioner, and they dedicate three to proration. However, neither one of these manage GIS within their office like we currently do. So I would dare to say that we're already doing other duties that these offices aren't doing and their staff beyond what we are. So, you know, from looking at that, we would probably need between one and three people if we're more like Rockbridge or more like Page in order to do that. The second issue, not only paying those people and finding those people, is where would we put those people? We don't have a lot of room. My office is the smallest office in the courthouse. As far as desk space, would be difficult to find somewhere to put those folks.
But you say you're going to need one to two extra people, not counting the one that's not comfortable and finding in there. Or is that counting her?
No, that's in addition to what I currently have.
So what does she do full-time?
She's usually the first line of interaction with customers as they come in. She answers the phones. She's also the manager of our tax relief program. She's right now working up tax relief for elderly and disabled in our Veterans Tax Relief Program. She's assisting people with their, she's not been doing the tax prep yet where she's a newer employee. We haven't quite turned her loose with that, but she has been doing the intake process with the BAO program, helping people get all their paperwork. Then, of course, she answers real estate questions, personal property, all that.
So I'm dumb, but on the tax prep stuff, that's seasonal, correct?
Yes, that's seasonal.
What's she doing the rest of the year?
Well, she does, like I said, tax relief, the Veterans Tax Relief. She answers the phone. She waits on people when they come in. She gets tax maps for them, you know, all this information. She does personal property.
Phone calls a day. Any idea what we get?
It varies. Right now, being the busy season, I would, yeah, it's considerably higher.
And then due what, a month or so?
Generally around May. It backs up a little bit, but we go into a different season. At that point, we have our business property filings we're starting to work up. We also get our DMV downloads to start working up and do cleanup on those files. So there's stuff to do all year round. It's not always customer service, you know, there's a lot of behind the scenes things that goes on in order to get the books ready and prepared.
And the mapping, is that full-time?
Yes.
So he works on that full-time, all the time?
Yes, predominantly. He is my real estate clerk. He does the partial, the straight transfers. I work on all the partial splits. Of course, with that, the splits, he does the mapping. And the mapper was lost out of my office two years before I came to office, and I had appealed to the board each year in my budget to ask for a mapper. I was never given one. So I was fortunate that I was able to hire a gentleman due to some people taking different jobs, other areas. I was able to hire a gentleman who had extensive background in mapping, and we've been working like mad to try to get called up because when you're behind the, you know, 10, 12 years' worth of map updates, it's a considerable amount to catch up.
Okay. Again?
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Anybody else here to speak on this matter? Public hearing, please. All right, we'll move on.
I'm going to say, there if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman. Allen, I see Allen's back here. I just wanted to ask a quick question. Allen, I've got a question for you just on these, on this report. It shows stuff in District 1 and one item in District 2. And I know you've been off, so that, I just want to clarify how come there's nothing else or if anybody else has been working on any of this while you've been off, or if they've just been working in one district.
Yeah, they have, but I didn't have theirs. I think back long. I think maybe they turned it indirectly to Rob, I think Cecil did.
Yeah, in the last packet, there was a, there was a report that I kind of typed up for you all. In the last packet, it had a information in that document.
A lot of my stuff too, when I was out. So I'm essentially starting over on the.
That's all I had. I just was curious to, to follow you around if they just worked in one particular area because that's the way it appears. I mean, there's like 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7 things in this District 1, one thing in District 2, and nothing in 3, 4, 5.
Yeah.
And I know the trash hasn't slowed down any.
No. No, we've got several others since. That's through game work. And I've got several others already for other districts. February, March, you know, and April, beginning. I don't, I don't think they have a lot of time to do both when I was out either.
But it is getting out of hand again.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I don't know, it's really, the biggest issue that I have honestly is I issue people a lot of times in war. I've almost got to put them out of the war because they're useless. I issue them right. And there's reason behind that because when I stand here, typically what happens is I get 30, 60, 90 days from the judge. And I understand that. The whole goal is just to get it in. Better than that, sometimes they don't touch you. They are a few will come to court, and the judge always does ask me, have I made an attempt? Does I answer yes or no, or some? And typically, that's when you'll give them the opportunity, how long will it take to clean it up? That's why some of these take forever. I had one particular case in Rose Hill that took about 18 months because a gentleman got a lawyer, and his lawyer kept appealing, and it's still not cleaned up. I think he ended up, I think they were fined about maybe $150, it's been several months ago, which is a vicious cycle. And I go right back and writing again, essentially, this, I don't have a lot of teeth to make them do it other than just rock and tape and keep it anyway back to the court. Seems like it's exhausted.
How about, that's a lot. How about sometime, could you make us a list of things that we need to go to the court system with that would make your job easier or better? And, you know.
Well, I don't, you mean by talking to the judge?
What, if we need to go to the, to the forward's office or the judge's, what's it going to take to get this doing?
I don't think, and not all of these charges, if you look, if you ever look through the litter of warrants that the county has. look through the litter ordinance as a county has, the majority of your litter ordinances are Class Four misdemeanors. And that's basically civil penalties. There are a few litter ordinances that are black or especially for litter. Same thing with animal, animal cruelty and theft. That's when the Commonwealth becomes involved. Commonwealth, fifty percent of my stuff, Commonwealth or Moulvah don't pull it. It's civil, civil penalty, small penalty. They're not involved unless what I charge carries jail time or criminal penalties.
Well, for example, I know you guys have asked us to try to get the ordinance changed where people is going by and stealing all the scrap metal that we could be selling and making money off of. I mean, I mean, that's just example of one thing that you all said that we need to do.
Get changed to, that's what I have wrote down here tonight, I think.
Yeah, I have a list of a few things that we could look at, as far as code changes.
Okay, we got the part before the oversight.
Yeah. What I, I'm not being disrespectful to the board and definitely not to the judge, but I guess what I'm trying to say is, when I go in front of the judge, I, I'm just, I can't, I've seen some other agencies, it's not done anything to the county, state agencies, complain about that to a judge and it didn't go so well. I guess what I'm trying to say is, a lot of these is Class Four misdemeanors punishable by a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar maximum fine. It's that man sitting at church. I, I can't tell him what to charge him. I don't. Maybe a question from Ms. Muntz, but I don't think the board technically has authority to tell a judge for it. It's frustrating for me, and I'm not saying that.
I'm not saying tell them what to do, I'm just saying try to work with them.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess the biggest thing is, is it comes down to people just, the biggest thing we get, honestly, from people, you don't have a right coming to my house to tell me what I did on my homeland. I hear that all the time, but that's, that's essentially what we get. And they're just not gonna change. Some of them will, some of them won't. But I was gonna ask you, that's all you have, I mean, but, yeah, I'd ask for any of you and you. I mean, the, some of the codes that I was, the biggest one. This one's Section fourteen sixty-four, the English Grimming Dump and Discharge of Litter and Solid Waste. That's, that's all my duck size. There's one part in this particularly, I'll skip down to the second line, it says with a single combined volume of twelve cubic inches or more. I, I don't know why that verbiage is in that. That's basically this twelve cubic inches, that's basically the same for a pop can or a bunker. Because it's bigger than twelve cubic inches, I can't charge it for it. I don't, I don't get that verbiage, that's longer than four nights, but just a little more like it, I, I would ask, that'd be taken.
We're getting ahead of ourselves. That's, we got that list under new business.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's not.
We'll have some discussion later on.
Okay, all right, all right.
New policies, new policies.
Any more questions on?
The Department of Labor report, Treasurer.
Department of Labor report.
So, I've got a couple of them, I, opioid abatement funds.
That's on, yeah.
Those are the Treasurer's report, three-hundred-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-five dollars. These are gonna be questions, what can we or can't we do with this money, this is to the county administrator, if we know?
I have a list of things that can be done, it's actually, I could go get those, they're pretty detailed. We work with PD One at Sandy Odell on programs that could, those things could be used for. Right now, they're allocated, but we've not actually distributed any of those funds. But they are pretty specific. When that was created, you had to have programs that weren't in existence, that you're doing something new to, to use those funds for. So, or it's, it doesn't, well, it doesn't have to be exactly new, if you extended a program. So, say you had some program that, that was out there that you had maybe one person devoted to, and then you decided to expand the whole program that would bring in some more people and you had to maybe hire a person or two to do that and buy, you know, some kind of supplies or something like that, that's what the intent and spirit of that fund is for.
School capital reserve account, there's five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars there. I remember when we opened that account jointly with the board supervisor, that he was part of it. Any plans for that money from the school system yet?
Not that I'm worried.
Next, Co-Road Improvement Funds, eighty-four-thousand-three-hundred-twenty-five dollars. What can we use that money for, or not use it for?
I don't have an answer for that. I honestly don't know.
I'd like to know if we can before the next week.
Okay.
Special Welfare Fund, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-forty-five dollars.
Which one was that, Special Welfare?
Welfare, Special Welfare Fund, two-hundred-and-twenty-eight-thousand-forty-five dollars.
I am not a hundred percent sure, but I think that is money that actually flows in and out, that goes through one of the agencies.
Okay, makes sense. Local Sales Tax, St. Charles, they don't have a town?
I actually spoke to the Treasurer about this. We were looking at moving that money into the general fund. There is provisions under the sales tax that it has to be spent in the locality, that it was there. So, really what I think in the spirit of that, if we were gonna do something with that money, for the spirit of that, it would need to be spent in the St. Charles community.
I think I brought that up in a motion, but the previous board, I think it already had been, that was the plan, but it's just waiting until.
We just need a project, that's what I'm saying.
Or wait to see if it was finally, you know, how it could be spent.
That might be a good project for the, those are Peters, maybe if you needed to do something different or something.
For the cause?
Huh?
If there's any additional cause, yeah, that's right.
Yes, because those are, those are excellent.
That's all I have. Make motion to approve, second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
Aye.
Payrow County Administrator reports, the Payrow warrants have been issued.
Did you do a public express?
No, I did not.
Did not hear from it.
Anybody here for public expression? If none, we'll move on.
I would like to say one thing about the Treasurer's report, if you don't care, there was sixty thousand dollars' worth of interest in that line that Mr. Kidwell has about to be taken.
Yes, I'm proud to mention that. I do want to thank the Treasurer for working closely with us and getting our money invested better than heaven, we'll put it that way. Looks like we ended up with sixty thousand dollars in interest for last month. Correctly needed.
Mr. Chief, did we go through the reports and recommendations of the board and?
Well, we moved that on.
It's right past public express.
Right. Report recommendations of the board.
I got mentioned from Mr. Jerry Ingle, I think he's in your district, right? About the Department of Forestry's offering fire reduction mitigation that we need to look into. He's on the board with the Department of Forestry of some kind, and he says, well, his county's receiving funding along with Scott County and we're missing out. He said if you need to contact him, that would be perfectly fine, but he wouldn't catch everybody up there. I do want to thank Mr. Leonard for being with us at the school budget meeting we had one, a week ago, two weeks ago. Good budget meeting with the school system. I think they're looking at around seven-point-seven million in local funds this year. From the last number I heard, that's, that's what was in the paper. I think that's roughly a million more than last year.
Yes, sir.
And the county, so the county, when they send out, just in real estate taxes, sends out seven-point-two in real estate taxes. And that's what we're faced with again this year. It's, as I said before, a daunting task. Had a good meeting with him though. We got an agreement on the table, I don't know if we got a new one. You're supposed to roll a copy, I think we need to show everybody. Mr. Wright?
I have one, yes.
Okay. We'll be looking at that, but, good meeting. That's all I have.
I just want to take a minute and express my gratitude and thanks to the first responders here in the county through this flood that we just experienced, our nine-one-one operator was Billy Kay for getting out, doing a lot of things, keeping us updated on some of these roadways and stuff, myself, I was out as well. As far as I know, we had two, two rest, two people rescued out of two different vehicles, I think, is that correctly, Kay? And other than that, as far as the rest of it goes, everybody, everything stayed pretty safe throughout the county and I think we've done a good job on the response on this one.
I'd also like to thank you, Billy Kay, and I'd like Dave, Robbie, into that mix also.
Yes, I'm sorry, Robbie.
I think you all done an exceptional job, keeping everybody aware of what was going on. And we appreciate it. And again, I'd like to thank, I'd like to thank Mike also for, with the, the school board meeting and then we, Robbie and I followed up at the school board with them again, and we had some pretty good conversation again. So, hopefully, you know, it's gonna be a better year as far as working with them than it was the past year. That's all I got.
County attorneys, absent reports and recommendations, the county administrator?
I have several things. And Ms. Muntz, she, I wanted to apologize for not being here tonight, she was extremely sick and I talked to her on the phone. So, she said that if we needed her for something, she'd be more than happy to, to talk to somebody on the phone if we needed to. Couple of quick things, I got a, a VOA request for twenty-five-hundred dollars. This actually would be spending some of the opioid abatement money that you were referring to before, Mr. Kidwell. We've done this for the last couple of years, they were asking for twenty-five-hundred dollars for that. Would like to get a vote to approve a distribution to them for that twenty-five-hundred dollars if possible, out of that opioid abatement money.
A VOA?
Yeah, it's the opioid abatement, yeah.
I would make motion to the board, second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
Aye.
I also have a request from Mountain Empire Elder Citizens to do the third quarter distribution of ninety-one-hundred dollars. That's for the fiscal year twenty-five, third quarter, that's for the MEOC and the CAC funds that is in the budget. I just need to get a, a authorization to distribute those funds.
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion second, I'll favor. Vote.
I have several things, I apologize, but it seems like everything comes up after the board packet that's gone out. Just real quick, this is for informational purposes, I went ahead and publicly county at the animal hospital that it would be okay to schedule rabies clinics for Saturday, the nineteenth, and Saturday, May the twenty-third. The person Thomas Flacher, the segment of Lee High, just to, they were asking for authorization to do that. I told them that was fine, as long as the school system was okay with using those parking lots. I do have, since we did have a declaration of a local emergency, I did a resolution for that, drew it up, actually with Dane's help, but I drew that up, he had done that before. So, anyway, it basically speaks of the significant rainfall. With a declaration of emergency through the emergency management director, we, the board has to ratify that. So, I did a resolution for that, twenty-five-zero-zero-four, that I would like to get board approval for that, to ratify that.
I'll make a motion on that, resolution twenty-five dash zero-zero-four.
Motion second.
Second. I thought you had seconded.
I did.
Okay.
I'll favor.
Aye.
Vote.
This is one of the things, and that goes back to the litter control. Six months ago, actually a little longer than that, there was a meeting between county representatives and Mr. Johnson on the west end out here in Jonesville about his property and it being, part of his property was grandfathered in when the new zoning was done. We've got pictures, he was, listed they would work with him, give him six months to work on his property. That hasn't changed. Actually, according to some pictures, it might have got a little worse. And so, we'll be making contact with them to try to work through their resolution to get that back into its original footprint. We're working with Ms. Muntz and those folks to try to do that. That's just one of those things that kind of come up that, that was there. I also talked to the Lee County, Virginia Historical Society on Wednesday. They expressed a desire to have the institute building listed as an endangered historic site. I told them about our reservations of listing that as a historic site, so they said they would hold off on that for now. I know, just to remind everybody, we said we would try to do something with the Historical Society on the institute building, but we were waiting for some other things to come through before we actually tried to take action to do that. So, I just wanted to give you a status update on that. Delta Airports has sent me a invoice, I got that on Thursday, for twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-eighty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. This is for the balance with a little bit of a retainer for the work that was done on the airfield electrical rehabilitation project. This is the third bill for this one and may even be the final one on it. This money has been requested as reimbursed from the Virginia Department of Aviation for that work, but I do need authorization, and this is in the budget, but I do need authorization to do that distribution.
When did they do the work?
That actually ended.
Probably around?
Yeah, it was between Thanksgiving and Christmas when they got through with the work and then we had to wait for a little bit to get a flight check on it.
Motion to approve. So, to clear this up, that's not taxpayer money, correct? It is, but it's not county money?
Two percent of it is county money.
Two percent?
Yes, so whatever two percent of twenty-nine-four-eight is, not much.
No. I'll second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
Aye.
Vote.
And a lot of things, and I spoke to the board about this before, but what, I did look at one code change, and I don't, I don't know if I'm getting the cart before the horse on this, because we were talking about some code changes, and we can wait on this for later, but I did put together a bunch of things for, doing some things on the, on the taxes. I also got a, received a phone call from Mr. Micklet, she was wanting to know if the board had any desire to take any action on the road at all. I told him I did not think so, but I would communicate back with him. And I believe that's it. And I believe that's it.
Prove this first.
Prove what minute?
I did that, jumped the gun on that, what you do it again.
Okay. You got loaded on?
Yeah, we did.
Okay, that's my fault then.
Yeah, I jumped the gun on it a minute ago. Done the payroll.
Okay, I'll make a motion to that.
Second. Motion second, I'll favor.
All right.
I'll pose.
Mr. Chair, we had a few items that we needed to do some budget work to move some money around, get them in the right spots, and that's what these appropriations are for. I just need board approval to get those moved.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
All right.
Just a few minutes. Mike, carry him, sir.
You want to be board of point?
Board of point, Bill, code of field?
Motion to table.
Southern water authority?
I make a motion to table.
We have a motion to table?
Motion to table, that's second. I'll favor.
All right.
Poe. Dry water authority?
Make a motion to point, Harold Evans. Second.
Motion second.
All right.
Planning commission?
We need to put that out for the next meeting. Motion to table.
Motion table?
Yes, that too. Second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
All right.
Poe. Spearhead trail blade? Motion table?
Is that position current in the field, Robbie?
Not running.
What is spearhead trail blade?
It's a little route that they've got. I don't even think they're meeting right now.
It's nothing to do with spearhead trails?
It's not their regular board.
No. Make a motion to table.
Second.
I'll favor.
All right.
Poe. Tourism committee, I make a motion to table.
Second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
All right.
Now your turn.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Karen and Mr. Moore, co-governors. My name is Paulie, they miss on the operations director for Life Care Ambulance Service and they're coming for you tonight to be transparent and ask for a resolution that would place us here in the Lee County area. We've been in business in Wise County area since 1986, providing emergency medical services, both basically advanced life support. We currently have an office in Wise and one in Coburn. As part of our initial licensure, the Virginia Office of EMS requires a resolution from the government board of directors to be able to obtain license. We have that in place and have had for several years now. While we're not required to have one in place for every county that we operate in, we felt it was in our best interest and the interest of everybody involved to come before you and kind of lay you know what our intentions for the Lee County area were. We have been serving this area for quite some time now with ambulance service, doing transport center now at the hospital, particularly over 40 tri cities and stuff of that nature, the long distance transfers. We service nursing homes, doctor's appointments and things of that nature. As you can imagine, coming from Wise, it's about an hour or so, it's time for us to be able to get here and that would be our closest unit to the Lee County area. So to make that a little bit easier on us, more beneficial to the patients and the citizens of Lee County, we have stationed a truck in the Lee County area in Pennington Gap. We're actively looking for a more permanent home. Right now, we've got just a temporary setup at the motel, which is working out okay for us, but certainly we're looking for something more long-term. So I met with the county administrator and I think he's got a resolution drew up to get the board's support on us continuing to be here and provide those services. One thing that I want to be very transparent on is we are not here to compete with your local 911 services. We have no intentions of coming in and taking over the 911 stuff. We are here primarily for those transfers that's going out long distance and do more critical care type stuff for the hospitals. With that being said, we will also provide a mutual aid agreement. And we have mutual aid agreements now in place with all but one of the agencies. We've just not had a chance to visit the Thomas Walker crew yet, to be able to give mutual aid that are signed by them. That in the event that the local EMS agencies are not available, they're overwhelmed, or they get so large event where it takes more resources, that we would certainly supply our crew and ambulances to be able to assist with that. We wouldn't be acting as a primary responder, we'd be there as an assistant to them at their request only. Right now, we are staffing the, our ambulance that we have here 24 hours days, seven days a week. Just staying pretty busy, so there are times that the unit is not here, it's also, as Johnson said, either Kingsport or Bristol, transfer patterns, you know, where the patients are just kind of all over the place, you never know where that truck will be. But it saves your local resources for the 911 stuff and not having to worry about how to get those patients out and it gives them, the patients a more timely manner to be able to get transported. And it's good resource for the hospital as well. And so we just wanted to kind of come in and just be transparent, any questions anybody had about what our intentions of being here are and certainly let's say it's a benefit for the patients.
And you're also trying to stack with the advanced life support crew?
Yeah, right now, we, I think in this presentation that I drew up, I mentioned that we would provide basic or advanced life support. We are trying to make sure that we staff 24/7 with advanced life support, either at the intermediate or permanent level as much as possible. One thing that we do have in place is we have other resources, of course, in the Wise area. And if ALS truck happens to go out for a long distance transfer, which is going to be gone for greater than about three hours, we look to be able to pull another unit down. And it may be a basic unit, but at least to cover and that way there's transportation to help and still that other truck to get here. Myself and a couple of our crew members that don't normally run calls or not normally assigned to the ambulance, but more in administrative role, we still have licenses and certifications and certainly we can hop on that ALS unit if they be, if some ALS transfer going out and it now comes in ALS units.
Do you accept insurance?
We do.
Are you satisfied with what the insurance?
I don't think everybody's ever going to be satisfied with it.
Well, are you going after people over and above what the insurance is?
Federal law requires us to send a bill, but we do more like a soft bill. We don't, we don't go, we're not a hard billing type agency with the requirements that Medicare says for it, that we have to bill the patient for the balance due, but we don't pursue it. We don't take it to court, it's like that. We don't harass them or anything about the bill.
Okay, that's all for me.
You looking for a particular area in the county to set up a base?
Somewhere in Pennington area, close to the hospital. The hospital that asks that we are able to have a truck to them if they call within 30 minutes, which is not unrealistic because the time they get to transfer paperwork and stuff done, you know, that amount of time has gone by. And again, certainly coming from Wise, we're looking at about an hour, you know, drive time down here. Fuel expense alone, you know, is going to be pretty high given that on multiple times a day is, I mean, right now, we're running, there's some days we don't do any transfers at all out and then other days we're doing three and four transfers out. So if you're pulling somebody from Wise every time, you know, it gets, it's pretty expensive wearing a trailer on the truck, things of that nature. So just somewhere in the Pennington Gap area.
What if, what if the patient requests the Old Will's Borough or Flabber? What if someone requested the Old Will's Borough or Flabber County? I'm from the Thomas Walker area down there on this, in this.
As long as the call originates in Virginia, we can pick them up and transport them.
I'm trying to understand how you make money doing this.
Anytime you do a patient pickup, there's a, there's a load fee. It's either a basic life support fee or an advanced life support load fee and then put the other mile on top of that.
Sure. So what if they don't have insurance?
Then we, we work with them. Again, we don't, we don't pursue it. If they can pay, we send them the bill, if they can pay, we accept what they pay and try to work out arrangements with them, but we don't, we don't pursue it. We're not going to take anybody for everything over.
But your biggest percentage is transferring in between hospitals or nursing homes? That's the majority?
Majority of what we're at, yeah, is either the nursing home transfers will come in with the hospital or hospital discharges back to nursing homes, doctor's appointments. You know, certainly we spend a lot of time with our ambulance, have done doctor's appointments. Out of the nursing homes, we have rehab, for example. Also, inter facility transfers from the ER here at Lee Regional to the tri city area or wherever it happens to be going. Of course, those transfers are arranged by the transferring physician. We don't have any control over where that patient goes to.
Ah, for me, I would make a motion to approve. I'll say.
Could we make that, since I went ahead and put, drew a resolution up? I don't know that the resolution is actually a necessity in this case, but we wanted to make sure we had that proper authority out there. I do have Resolution 25 dash 001, which would handle that, so would it maybe be more appropriate to?
Accept that resolution?
Accept the resolution.
I think that's what it has to be. I make a motion then.
We've got a motion to accept Resolution 25 dash 001.
Second.
Second. I'll favor.
All right.
Poe.
Thank you. I'll be able to come get that.
I'll be too small.
Thank you. Water line project?
Yeah, a text is another resolution that is necessary to approve my signing and submitting all the paperwork to complete the appropriation of $700,000 in funding to the Appalachian Regional Commission to fund the Stiglifford water line extension project. This is the middle of Wallens Creek Phase One. This grant actually funds that incomplete and no county funds would be necessary to complete this project. There is an interim agency agreement. There's also an administrative agreement with Linn-Wisco. I just need authorization to accept that and do all the appropriate paperwork to get this project.
I'll make a motion to accept that resolution.
Second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
All right.
Mr. Chair, I have another resolution in the packet for the equal employment opportunity program for Lee County. We do have a program in place. There was some verbiage that needed to be put in that. This is a formal decree for this that is required to accept a lot of DHCD type grant funding and I just needed to get that in there. This is something the county is actually already doing. I just needed a formal decree for that.
Motion to approve Resolution 25 dash 003.
Second. Motion second, I'll favor.
All right.
Mr. Chair, yeah, the commissioner has received all the information concerning the reassessment. We, at this date, I think there's maybe less than 100 that has still lacked to be entered because some other information had to be put in there. We're going to schedule some meetings to get some dates for some world equalization hearings, their certification hearings that they have to have. They requested a payment of $74,925. I spoke to that group. A lot of that money, they're going to have to do a lot of mailings. That's where things are going to have to go out. And the board had requested that we not pay anything else to that group until we actually did receive all of the land cards back. We do have those, although we haven't had all those entered yet. They're asking for that money and I think to move forward with this, to get everything scheduled and let them get those mailings out, I'm just requesting that we go ahead and pay that parcel bill. And that will not be the final bill for this, but I do request to get this parcel bill paid.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion second, I'll favor.
All right.
EDA funds?
During an EDA board meeting, and I think maybe Mr. Kidwell was in that one, they made a request to move the EDA funds into an account that would be held by them for $405,931.31 to be placed in a fund that they control. Believe that they may have withdrew that, but I didn't get to speak to Mr. Edwards about that today. But these were funds from the Scott County-Dublin project that was sitting out there. These funds are in there. They, to spend that money, it is required for their board to vote to approve spending this money and then your board, this board, Lee County Board of Supervisors, to approve that same expenditure. So both boards would have to agree. That stipulation wouldn't change, but with the current situation of what we, the work that's been done the last month or so, I don't know if I would recommend that at this time or not, just to keep that money in the, in the fund.
Did you say they withdrew that money?
No, they were, I don't know if they were going to. This was a request that was made, but I did not get to speak to them to see if they had withdrew that request to move the money.
It's kind of like the capital's reserve money, but the school system, it's, it's an agreement of both boards.
Yeah.
I think it needs to stay that way and that's just my opinion.
You don't have to take any action at all.
Rock Bottom Horse Camp Pump and Hollow system?
Yeah, received a request from John Mule with Rock Bottom Horse Camp. They're requesting the board's approval to apply for a pump and hollow septic system for their property. This, the system consists of a tank with an alarm on it and a company with under contract to pump that system out. They are in the process now of getting permanent septic there, but they need this for this time to do some of the work that they needed to do. The board has done this before with a couple of folks. What's required is a $1,000 bond payable to Lee County in case there's any kind of situation that the county would need to come in and do some work on that pump and hollow system. They're agreeable to that. The health department is agreeable with it, so I just need approval from the board to allow to move forward with the pump and hollow septic system under those requirements.
I'll make a motion to approve under those requirements.
I'll say. Motion second. I'll favor.
All right.
Yeah, the next item on the list is a biennial agreement between Lee County and VTM, which I think we've got a couple of representatives here today. Ms. Coleman sent me this agreement that is a mutual aid agreement. It's, it lasts for two years. This is a renewal of something that we've done for I don't know how many years. You guys might could tell me that.
A long time.
Yeah. I just need authorization to, to sign this agreement.
Make a motion.
Motion second, I'll favor.
All right.
Headed animal control, body worn camera?
I received a request from, I don't know about having body worn cameras, so I contacted So I contacted our current county axel about those. There's a lot of situations that you might could come and speak to that if you wanted to. But there's a lot of situations they run into where they get into a situation with an animal or something that's going on, and a body worn camera would help them a lot in a... in a situation where it's a he said, she said deal. The cost of that for one year, just adding it to the sheriff's program, is $2,879.35 for the first year, and then every additional year is $2739.55 for the remainder of the four years. This would also include new cameras for those three officers, plus a new camera halfway through the term of the contract. It would basically just add these folks to that program that's... we renewed, I believe, two months ago, two board meetings ago.
Personally, I don't think you need to make the case for them. I mean, you're out there with... sometimes you get called out with, you know, especially if there's an accident or something, and there's an animal involved, so...
We also do the fourth amendment searches with it, search warrants. And a lot of times, we're the first to sue the door if there's a dog in the house, so...
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Just... Let's deal with Alan. We're finally to the code change.
That's what I was gonna say, I'm just standing there.
Yeah, we... there was a lot of talk about code changes. And I do have a few recommendations from Mr. Fortner on some animal control. I know that Mr. Carter had some building and zoning codes that he wanted to look at too. We weren't fully prepared to present a lot of those tonight, but I know that there are three in particular that is... Mr. Fortner is looking at. One was one he mentioned earlier, which is Section 14 dash 64. That is to remove that wording of the 12 cubic inches or more. There's another one, 14 dash 68, that talks about... You need to define residential or farmland for what the exterior of the property needs to be as far as being litter free, and then there's some scavenging things. What I would like to do is form a small meeting to look at a few of these codes, come up with a recommendation to the board so that we could have a public hearing to have some code changes done. I don't know if it would be... it's whatever the board would like to do, but I was thinking maybe if there was a couple of board members and maybe some department heads, that sort of thing, we'd sit down and have some meetings over these codes to make these appropriate changes. And we could get those together as a group, bring them to the board with a public hearing, and make a few code changes, if that would be possible.
I would also add that probably the county attorney needs to be...
That's what I was gonna say, she probably is right, I'm thinking.
Would anybody wanna volunteer for that?
Roger.
I don't... I don't care to sit down. Nobody else wants to?
No.
What I will do in the next few days is get together with those department heads and put it together as scheduled, and we'll start having a few meetings. See if we can get some of this done. It would be nice to be able to do all of these in a group.
Yeah.
There may be some with the... The animal also, there's like that, especially like that. County don't have a leash law. There would have to be twenty of us if we had a leash law, but I'd like to see the county have a nuisance law. Individuals... there's nothing I can do about a barked dog. Or, you know, to that, I think, but the nuisance animal also be bark a dog. You got a dog running cattle. There's not a lot we can do. If we see the dog running a cattle, we call it home. Code actually says we have a right to shoot you. If it's a dog running injured, it calls home. I think you see that as a nuisance. It's just cops laying all that person's property. They can't sit up on that park for cattle. I'd like... I'd like to have a nuisance law. If we have people that just refuses to keep their animals up, it'd be a way to help our citizens out a little bit more with, you know, making people keep their dogs on their own property. Because right now, I don't really have an ordinance that pertains to that unless I have an actual cannabis injury or something like that. But I guess that would go anywhere.
Just out of curiosity, if John does cattle, a dog that's runnin' by cattle, does that landowner... does that cattle owner have a right to shoot those dogs?
Well, in the act, run and chase, it don't hold.
Okay.
Can't let it go home.
Shoot it in that yard?
No. Now, that's... that's an issue right now that I'm going through, but you get it. You're going here a lot, but it's like I told you about, you always like to assume that your own video camera too. We have no problem with protecting cattle. I actually help it. That's the first thing I tell them, you got every right to protect your animals, your sales, your children. It's what I want, but you can't, you know, somebody breaking into your house, you can't hitch back here in town with a bear and be a wood. You might want to, but you don't want to.
Uh, one other thing. Give us your input on these cameras. Why are we paying $100 a month for these cameras at sites or more?
What's the question?
Do we... are they worthwhile? Have you wrote any tickets off of them? Okay, what's your recommendation?
I don't recommend them for one reason, is I can't get... I've never been able to get a tag off of them. Mr. Colman was... I actually had one the other day. There was a female having a little child in a dumpster at Flatwoods. I wasn't nowhere close with the guy on him. Neither was the other two, and I told us, you know, best bet be me a tag number. Or just...
I've always thought it would be cheaper, these cameras that is operated off cell towers and stuff and sends pictures to phone. I'm not saying set that camera up there and just let it go and go and go, but it would be mobile. If you had a problem someplace, you could move that camera around from place to place. And if Jane Doe decided to shoot the camera...
You already done it.
Uh, if she didn't hit the SD card, we would have Jane Doe's picture of...
Well, if you've got...
I mean, that's just... what's your thoughts on those things?
If you've got cell phone service that goes to the cloud, you don't pay that stick.
But you'd have to go through all that stuff. But since they got the AT&T stuff everywhere, we've got pretty much... We have to say it, but still...
Yeah, for the most part, I... like I say, that's just... that's... I don't have an issue with them as far, but I just... I... they're not benefit, that's in my opinion.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. Do we need to just take the vote and get rid of those cameras?
The only problem I've had in the past with gang cameras back years and years ago, I did buy some. The problem with getting those to the cloud and looking like a cellphone.
But technology has changed.
Yes, technology's changed, and people were stealing. And I had one installed in a little no time. Yeah, I just... that's just the problem, is I gotta be able to... Gotta be able to get that tag number at least. But that goes back to changing the code too, with inside the gangs that we were talking about, so... That'll be all.
So what's the penalty for a Tennessee vehicle coming and dumping trash in Lee County?
The problem is, is a lot of the ones that we looked into back, it's been probably six, seven months ago, maybe a while. I think there were fifteen, fourteen or fifteen Tennessee vehicles, but there... There was everyone except for one instance, Lee County residents. If I can speak to this a little bit, the issue that happens is it's on some of those roads, especially in your district, they have Tennessee addresses. My understanding of the way that this works, that does not necess... That does not allow them to have a Tennessee tag. Okay? What is supposed to happen there is, is they... if that family or individual, if they live in Virginia, in Lee County, but they have a Tennessee mailing address, they are supposed to come and give proof of the physical location of their dwelling and take that to the DMV, and they can get Virginia tags even though they have a Tennessee address, which would fix this problem.
I thought after they... well, you're talking about a Tennessee address, never mind. If you're renting and you have Tennessee tags, and you're a resident of Lee County for more than thirty days, you're supposed to change your tags lots of times.
Correct.
So that's what I understand.
I think it's a terrible amount of revenue is getting gone right there.
Well, actually, and you're losing personal property tax.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
So obviously, the board supervisors, not the police. What's the penalty for a Tennessee resident for dumping trash in Lee County dumpsters?
I don't know, but like I said, the... all the ones that I have competition for are Lee County residents running Tennessee tags.
But it's not legal?
But I can't try...
How are they proven that they're Lee County residents?
Their address. We run... we run tags. And like I said, I'm... I'm... don't quote me, but I'm pretty sure it's fourteen. And these all came from the Richard death, so I...
Did you report it to the sheriff's office?
We did.
Anything coming with it?
I... I don't know.
There is instances of people that actually do live in Tennessee that have property in Virginia. Like, like, I know one particular guy that comes up and spends weekends on... You know, he takes his trash out, but he's got property there.
Right, that did... that did come up also. Because you've got a lot of, especially farmers, that have land in Lee County that actually reside in Tennessee.
In my personal opinion, I said, and I'll say it again in case nobody's... somebody might have missed it, but I'd rather... I don't care where they're from. I'd rather them be throwing the trash in the can as I would be throwing it on the road.
Yeah.
I mean, it just makes no sense to worry about somebody from out of town or somewhere throwing like trash in a can, and... Too many of that just...
That was... I can't find it in the code right now, but I know we talked about this once before, where we talked about people coming through the county like transits. Like, I used to work in Tadwell, I worked in London, Kentucky. That's what I'm... that's the way I termed transit, or people who's traveling through the county, visitors or tourists. Just because it's out of state tag doesn't necessarily mean that they're breaking the law. I mean, any of them could tell me, "Well, I'm just visiting." Are we gonna stop our tourists from using their trash dump? I don't really know how to enforce it beyond. I would agree with Mr. Kidwell as far as that, but, you know, that enforcement's really above me as far as...
I'm just curious what the penalty is. If there's no penalty, what about... what about it?
I'm sure that there is.
To waste their time, if there's no penalty or fine or nothing to it?
It's definitely a Class Four, which would be a $250 fine. I mean, that's your smallest junior litter code, but...
But there's a penalty for out of state tags?
I couldn't wait to elaborate on that.
Yeah, I would be more inclined, concerned about that.
Yeah.
Lee County citizens running Tennessee tags, not having them registered here.
Because how can you have a... how can you have a... Live in Lee County and have a Lee County address, and you drive a vehicle that's got a Tennessee address? I mean, so... What they do if they drive them with a Kentucky tag?
Peal box.
Or a Michigan tag, and that's where they get them.
Yeah. Actually, there's a lot of folks that live down that road because of the way the US Postal Service runs. They have a Tennessee address for their mailing address because they don't... they don't recognize that line for the post office.
Right.
That's... that's the real issue. With a lot of them, therein too, out of that fourteen, eight, nine, six, that was LNU Pet City. And that was Florida, Montana, Colorado. It raises a red flag when you start to try these kids down and start talking to them. They're here in college, I mean... I'm not saying everybody's screwed, but the ones that we called, except for one, he was out of Kentucky. He was here visiting, of course, anyway.
What's your recommendations on the cameras?
I just... I don't think... you know, man, they're not helping me. I just be honest, I can't...
I think it's just a bill that we're paying for.
I think you got Blackwater, John Ford, Blackwoods. That's the only three that I wire of. I don't even know if the Blackwater one's still over, I knew...
Somehow they's in cahoots with the fire department over there.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't know anything about it.
Yes, it's a gated Flatwoods. It's a gated Flatwoods.
It's a bill for... is it Wi-Fi legal, is it like?
Internet. For working the cameras?
Yeah.
Making a motion, Mr. Walter?
That would be mine.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
A motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed.
And I think in that same category too, I don't know what the... How long were hooked for, for that internet bill for that fire department? But we don't pay their net bill for any other fire departments, so if that type of... I'd say we get rid of that payment too, like, buy their own.
It's been over a long time.
I don't know the exact deal with that, but they sometimes...
Well, that was probably a two-year contract. I think that's how they set theirs up, so I don't remember when it started, but...
I believe it was just started with the pass board, I think.
It did, but like I say, I don't know how far into it was.
I think that's what it was, it was usually just using their Wi-Fi. I think it was close to the fire department, but I don't know. I think... But I think we get that key.
Yeah, where was that?
It's over at Blackwater.
The fire department's outside the dumpster.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I think the actual logs or whatever is in the fire department. We could pull a Wi-Fi, you know, from that, to run the cam. I've never actually used those cameras, I don't... never had seen them, so... I could talk to them about that. We can get that money real quick.
Yeah, we just need to get that one out, because we don't pay for any other... If the rest is strict too, but I mean, we don't pay for any other fire department. We should be safe for that.
I think the motion would cover that, if the vote...
That's what it was, that's our vote?
Yeah, so I think that would take care of it. I think that motion vote would take care of that, because it was to get rid of them. So any extends that went along with them, we can still work with, so I think that's... But I'll make contact with them, make sure they don't not have what they need. You know, their service interaction, I guess, I'll follow with them.
Yeah, just a matter of them calling, picking up the tag.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we go into closed session under deploying personnel 2.2 dash 371181, and investing the public funds 2.2 dash 3711886.
Second.
Alan needs you to stay around here too. Need you to stay around closed session.
Got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.